We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Bergman.
Present.
Commissioner Gutierrez.
Present.
Commissioner Harper Pedersen.
Present.
Vice Chair Bradley.
Present.
Chair Silberman.
All right, the next item on the agenda is general public comment. The purpose of this public comment.
My period is to give members of the public an opportunity to comment on items that are not on the agenda. The commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the commission's general practices to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone here to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, the next item is a motion regarding the minutes of the February 20th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Does anyone have any changes to the draft minutes?
Just one, I think I was excused for the 20th. I know I wasn't there.
You're listed as excused.
I thought Jesse was listed as excused.
Oh, you're correct.
You are listed as excused everywhere important.
Okay.
But it is correct. Jesse is incorrectly listed as excused in the, you know, at the top, but I'm sure staff can fix that.
That's all I noticed.
Without a motion. Is there anything else? Okay, then I will.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Good.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Epstein. Vice Chair Bradley.
Yes.
Chair Silberman.
Yes. All right, we now have two public hearing items. I'm going to read the procedure for public hearing into the record. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with staff's recommendations. The applicant may then make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation or decision. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public notice, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. We ask speakers to fill out a speaker's form. They're in the back there if you haven't filled one out already. And hand it to the recording secretary over there or over there. She's moving around. Prior to addressing the commission, it will assist us in preparing the minutes. Speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. That will also assist in preparing the minutes, which are very important. With that, the first public hearing item is 549 Prospect Street. It's request for design review, a conditional use permit, a tentative map, and protected tree removal for construction of a new multifamily building with four town houses. Is there a presentation?
Yes, there is. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Laura Russell. I'll be presenting this item this evening. The applicant team is here as well and would also like to make a presentation. So as described in the staff report, the entitlements before you this evening are for design review, conditional use permit for the parking location, as well as for the parking quantity, a tentative map for condominiums, and a protected tree removal permit. The site is on the east side of Prospect Street between San Carlos Avenue and Magnolia. There are single-family houses on either side, and the property is currently also developed with a single-family home that would be demolished with the project. The lot size is about 6,500 square feet. The general plan designation is multiple-family medium density, and the zoning is RM 59 multifamily medium density. So you can see on the slide that the RM 59 is the orange color, so the area immediately surrounding the site, although it's been historically developed with a single-family, is RM 59 multifamily zoning. Here is the general site plan with Prospect Street on the left-hand side, and you can see the first floor garages, which serve the four townhomes. So a little bit about code compliance. The building height varies. At the sidewalk grade, it's 38 feet 2 inches, and then it steps down with the slope in the back. It's three stories with parking at the first level and the two floors of living space above that. And then the uppermost level is just the access to the outdoor private balcony or deck area. The project complies with all setbacks and other numerical development standards. In particular, the proposed floor area ratio is 1.3 or 2.0 is the maximum. Each unit has a two-car garage, as I mentioned, on the lower level. Through the review process, the applicant has revised the project in response to staff design feedback, as well as neighborhood comments. Those changes have been incorporated for the commission's consideration this evening. The building is contemporary in design while also including a more traditional gable roof element to create a relationship with the traditional single-family homes in the immediate area. Staff has been supportive of this design approach throughout the review process. The primary exterior materials are cement board with integrated charcoal color and horizontal woodboard. And we do have the samples of those two, if you would like to see those up close. Frameless glass guardrails are proposed for the second-floor balconies, which can be seen here on the right side. Here is the rear and left or north side elevations. You can see on the side elevation more clearly how the building steps down and is designed in relationship to the existing grade. The windows as an additional exterior element are anodized with a charcoal finish and are proposed to have a 3-inch recess, which a little exceeds the code requirement of 2 inches. The applicant supplied a landscaping plan, which was included in your packet and plans. While it does comply with the municipal code, the applicant would like to propose some enhancements this evening for your consideration, so they will go over those in their presentation. But briefly, as included in the staff report and in the packet, two trees are proposed towards the rear of the property. Front yard landscaping that serves as common open space is at the front on Prospect, and two street trees are proposed. A variety of different grasses and flowering perennials are proposed throughout the site. The municipal code requires eight parking spaces specifically for the units, which the applicant is providing, and then two guest parking spaces. And they're requesting a parking reduction for those two guest parking spaces. They submitted a parking analysis by a traffic engineer to support that reduction. That's the process that's outlined, as you know, in the municipal code for this type of reduction. It notes that the project is close to transit stops and includes bike parking. They also compared it to ITE, Institute of Traffic Engineers standards, and by those ITE standards, the traffic engineer estimates that the amount of parking would be sufficient for this project 85% of the time or a little more. There's a little bit of rounding involved, but their conclusion is that the amount of parking on site would be enough to accommodate this development. They also completed a study of on-street parking in the immediate vicinity, and that is included as an attachment to your staff report. And they found in the most, the least available time, I guess you would say, there are 13 spaces available on this block of Prospect Street the night that they inventoried it.
At the least available time?
I was reporting to you the time when the least number of spaces were available. Thank you for the clarification. The second aspect of the conditional use permit is for the location of the parking, and they are proposing parking within 40 feet of the street-facing property line. It is a townhouse development, so those parking spaces are within the building envelope. There would be a planted front yard, and the vehicles would be screened from the public view, so staff does find that that criteria in the code could be met. They're proposing a tentative map for condominium purposes. It has the standard requirements and conditions, so I won't go into any detail, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any on that entitlement. In regards to tree removal, the applicant may be providing some additional clarifying information this evening on this, but as reflected in your staff report, there are five existing trees on site. All of those are deemed significant by our municipal code, and all of those trees would be removed. The replanting plan in the staff report includes two trees on site in the rear yard, which would be 36-inch box size, and two street trees, which would be 24-inch box size. But they do have some additional information for your consideration on this topic.
So we are removing five existing, but replacing it with four, but they will have further explanation?
Two on site and two street trees. But I think the applicant would like to provide some additional landscaping or some additional plans for you this evening. So the applicant held a neighborhood meeting for this project and for another project that they are working on, a joint meeting. And they also created a project website. They did revise the plans in response to those comments, but there were a number of comments that came in over a large amount of time. And so those are summarized in your staff report, but there were comments related to privacy, thoughts about massing, concerns about parking, concerned about construction staging. So those are outlined in the staff report as well as the applicant's responses. We did send the normal notice to meet the legal requirements. We had a resident come to the counter to ask to see the plans. We received one letter of support in advance, which was included in your packet. And then we received a couple of emails today, which were distributed to the Planning Commission on the dais. Those came in pretty late in the day, but those were emails that had concerns about the project. So if you would like to approve the application this evening, this is the motion you would make, and I would be happy to try to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for staff at this time? So I thought you said that the tallest it was was 38 feet, but the report says 50 feet. So which, did I mishear you? Did you misspeak? And if it's 50 feet, where is it 50 feet?
The height varies because of the slope and the way that the building is designed to go down. At the sidewalk, at the front elevation, it's 38 feet from that sidewalk. But in terms of how we measure in the municipal code, the tallest point is at the rear of the property, and at that point, it is 50 feet to the highest point of the building.
Okay, it just looks, because it steps down, and it didn't look like there was that much slope, so we're, there's actually, it must be 15-plus feet of slope between the front and the back. It goes down 15 feet? I'm just trying to understand, where's, how is it, if it's 38 feet in the front, slopes down, how do we, where is it 50 feet?
That's a good question. Let me take a second and take a look at the plans and be able to clarify.
Or maybe the applicant can explain.
The applicant can. It has to do with the way that our municipal code height definition works as well and the way the grade plane works and where you measure the height from in the municipal code. But let me take another look and clarify.
To me, it's a huge difference. I mean, because we're basically comparing it to single-family houses that I'm guessing are like 24 feet, if that, you know, so we're basically, if we're comparing 24 feet to 50 feet versus 24 feet to 38 feet, I'm sounding like a kindergartner now. There's a 14-foot difference, I think. I can't, and I can't do math. That's fine, thank you. I appreciate it. So the applicant wishes to make a presentation?
We sure do.
As you come up, just for the record, I'd note that we do have two emails. One is from Jonathan Glazier, sent today at 4:57. The other is from Don Brozek, which I also assume was sent today, although it doesn't have a date and time, but those, if you're here, we've read them, and they're part of the record. Hi.
And to clarify the record, there is a 14-foot grade change from the front to the rear. At the left side of the site, it's different than the right side of the site, just again because it's all on a slope, but there's a big grade change. And so Laura's talking about the difference between the ridge at the front building to the grade at the very rear of the site. But there's no visibility of the building from the rear of the site and vice versa.
So even though it's a step down?
Yeah, so we.
It's 50 feet above grade at the back?
Above the existing grade.
Above the existing grade?
The rear townhome?
Yeah.
Is 38 feet above the rear of the lot. The front townhouse is 38 feet above the front of the lot. And so what we're talking about is a measurement from the ridge of the front townhouse to the lowest point on the site at the very rear of the site. Okay?
Through the chair, would you like to see those plans now, or would you like to come back to the.
I'll take it whenever. I'm just, I'm probably more, I'm always a little confused. I think I'm just more confused than usual, but.
I will talk about that a little bit in the presentation.
And I'd also, I assume at some point I'll get to see the roof deck in relation to the neighboring properties?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, good evening, commissioners. We're excited to be here tonight to show you our proposed project of 549 Prospect Street and to walk you through the evolution of its design. As with our recently approved project on Laurel Street, we were approached by Dragonfly to help them understand how to best approach the project's development, given its zoning and context. As seen on the city zoning map, our project is literally on the transition where the downtown San Carlos abuts lower-density residential uses. This is reflected in the sites RM 59 zoning shown in orange, and the green star represents our site. Our immediate neighborhood contains an eclectic mix of building types and sizes, including commercial uses along San Carlos Avenue and an apartment building at its intersection with Prospect Street, and those are shown again on this graphic. Multifamily buildings on both Prospect and Sycamore Street, there are multifamily buildings on both Prospect and Sycamore Street, which is located behind our project to the east. The RM 59's transitional zoning allows for the development of an apartment building at 50 feet in height and with nine dwelling units, and that scheme is shown here in yellow. We took a different approach to reflect the site's context. We're proposing a for-sale townhouse development, a use that's more compatible to single-family houses. Townhomes by nature allow for a much smaller project by not having shared amenities like parking, a parking garage, a lobby, mechanical rooms, elevators, and stairs, exit stairs. We're proposing less than half of the allowable density with four townhouses. Our project has a street-facing height of 38 feet to the ridge or 27 feet to the gutter line. It's noteworthy to mention that our townhouse approach by having a separate foundation for each townhouse, it allows them to step down the hill corresponding to the site's grade. The project's form and details have evolved extensively based on feedback from the city and our neighbors. For our application's original design, we took a more modern approach to a gable form. Working directly with AL and, as mentioned by Laura, with city staff, we extensively refined the design's form, developing a warm and rich palette of materials and details. The predominant materials include natural wood and an integral color, smooth-finished cement plaster. We took design cues from some wonderful precedents, and we're showing those to you tonight on this slide. Those are also in the drawing set.
But there's no, like, go back, like, so looking at the lower left-hand corner, the lower right-hand corner, there's no areas of landscaping like that with your project, right? Because it's basically up to the property line on both sides and pretty close to the front, right?
We do have landscaping on all four sides of the property, and I'll show you that in the drawing. I'll clarify that.
On the natural wood, I mean, how is it, I mean, natural wood fades, and there's a lot of treatments that are put on the natural wood nowadays, and they can fade not as quickly or at all. Can you explain that?
It's a great comment, and I typically have avoided using wood on projects because of this issue. The product that I've given you and also a product that we proposed for use on Laurel Street that I talked about is where they combine technology and wood. And in this case, what they do is they steam petrify by bringing it up to an extremely high heat, thereby making it.
Stump.
It makes it very hard, but it eliminates all, removes all the sugars that pest-like, so it completely preserves it. These have been tested, and this has been around for a few years. They're incredible. They don't fade after a couple of years. They don't need to be finished. You certainly can apply a finish to it. It still is a wood with a grain, but it doesn't take on the kind of fading or dirty look that wood can do. And that's why we're looking at it. We're really excited about this product.
Thank you. I just, I was curious. I was hoping that that was the case.
Please continue.
Let me go to the next slide. Throughout this process, we focused on the San Carlos's design guidelines for residential districts, which we've applied to all four sides of the project, and as follows. Front yard landscaping and a trellis entry to demarcate pedestrian entry. A roofline offset between adjacent townhouses along the length of the property. A facade composition and articulation with setbacks and projections. Two complementary colors with a third accent material. Each material has an integral color and has low to no maintenance throughout their lifetime. And detailing including recessed, high-quality windows and decorative metal elements. Also, the reduced height of the project, along with the gable roof, provides a design that's contemporary but rooted in traditional elements, and in this way has a design that's compatible with our neighborhood. In addition to a well-attended meeting with our neighbors, we launched a project website to keep our neighbors informed about the project's design evolution and timeline. The website also allows for neighbor comments, which we've summarized for you in a memo that you have in your packet. Additionally, we've had direct email correspondence with some of our neighbors. Based on their input, we've refined many of the project's details, specifically with regards to privacy, landscaping, and a few other things. Along the second level, go back here for a moment. Along the second level, a Juliet balcony, which you can see pointed out on the right side of the image, provides a buffer between our project's living spaces and our neighbors. We also have revised the roof deck for each townhouse to be set back from the building's edge and to have a solid rail that eliminates views into our neighbors' property, as seen in this section. Our across-the-street neighbors were specifically concerned about the project's impact on their existing bayview. Given the site's slope and our project's lowered height, we've demonstrated that although visible, our project does not have an adverse impact on their views. We've worked closely with outer-space landscape architecture to develop a palette of rich plantings and details to enhance the sidewalk experience while helping to create a more verdant outlook for our neighbors. In particular, we're proposing a lot of planting along the property lines, which will help to provide buffering and screening. Since the submittal of the Planning Commission drawing set, we've increased the quantity of compliant landscaping from 15 to 23%. And my image up on the monitor is showing some of those changes. I was planning on handing out a revised landscape set, but our architect wasn't able to do that today, and so my plan is to submit that to the city tomorrow and discuss the changes and show you on the screen that we're talking about doing. So we, 23% of compliant landscaping. In actuality, we're landscaping 64% of the site when including all the site's hardscape, fencing, and property line plantings. The site's paving will be permeable, decorative, and beautiful, not a nondescript port-in-place concrete, and you can see a few images on the bottom right-hand side of options that these could be. Regarding trees, in addition to the four currently proposed, we propose to add three more. That would give us a total of two along the sidewalk and five on site. And I'm showing some proposed locations for those. It would be an additional tree in the front yard, four along the backside. There's also a possibility of planting some thin but taller trees along the driveway up against the fence line, as was done on a recently completed project at 1536 Cherry Street, and you'll see those trees along the driveway. My plan is to try to finalize those details and submit that set tomorrow. The layout of each townhouse is as follows. At the ground level, each has a two-car garage, accessed along the south side, and residential entrances to the north side. The second level contains living spaces, while the third level contains bedrooms.
Can you go back a second? There were supposed to be two guest parking spots. Where are those in comparison to, if there's two for each unit, where are those, are they in front of there?
They're asking for a reduction.
The ones that are perpendicular to?
They don't exist.
Well, they don't exist because of the closeness to the transit. Okay, gotcha, okay.
While you're on there, so where's the, obviously, I can see where the trees are, but where is the additional landscaping going? I mean, what is it replacing? I mean, it's not replacing structure, right? So.
Right, from the 15%.
Yeah, so where's the other 8%?
So we had an area toward the rear of the lot where we were doing communal trash collection. This is an example. We've removed that, so if you look in your drawings, you'll see that showing. What we've been finding on some of the other townhouse projects is that there's a preference to just having trash cans in your garage and bringing them up to the street versus shared enclosure at the rear of the site, which requires some folks to walk all the way back and then all the way back. way back and then all the way back up front, and so on and so forth. And so we redesigned the back to gain some square footage.
And is that the entire 8% or is there some somewhere else?
There was also, there was also a miscalculation on our part in the drawings.
Okay. All right.
Yep. Last but not least--
Pardon me--
--our project--
I'm so sorry. Can you go back to, just quickly, the, the next slide? Okay. And then the slide after? Okay. What's the square footage of each condominium?
Dylan is gonna--
Twenty-two or twenty-one, some change.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't quite know if I got the number right.
Exactly. It's on the cover sheet of the drawing set, and 1,766 gross square feet for each.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And there'd be a condo association attached to this, correct?
Absolutely, yes. Last but not least, our project will include green building and sustainability features not commonly seen in today's construction. In particular, most of the building components will be fabricated offsite and using light-gauge steel framing. Assembling these onsite, these parts onsite affords an approach that takes a significantly shorter time to build and results with fewer materials, material deliveries, and construction workers onsite. It's a huge benefit to our neighbors. This approach also creates much less construction noise and waste and allows for a higher quality construction.
So you're actually putting in solar shingles that'll actually absorb and actually, that'll actually contribute to the electric grid?
Absolutely, yes.
Oh, that's wonderful, okay.
Right, so, working, working with the mechanical engineer, we're designing these to be zero net energy and all-electric, no gas.
Okay.
So, they produce the energy from the sun that they use, heating, cooking, water heating, air conditioning, lighting, everything, car charging, all those types of things. And we're looking at using the shingles, not panels, just because they're much more complimentary. They don't, they don't stand out like, like another element on the roof. The steel framing provides fire and earthquake resilience, not seen with wood framing, resistance to mold, mildew, and pests, and doesn't shrink or expand over time, which increases the overall durability of the houses. Offsite fabrication benefits we previously noticed, noted. We have an extensive bio-filtering landscaping plan that's been vetted by both our civil engineer and with the assistance of our landscape architect to help deal with stormwater management so that it's not flowing into a neighbor's yard or going back into the city's storm system. We have-- put here, let's see, we're looking at harvesting rainwater, and there are a variety of ways to do those, but through, through collection systems and then using that for irrigation, electric car charging for both sides of the garage, zero net energies, I said, and then home automation features, which will improve the home efficiency, safety, and comfort. Lastly, healthy materials and finishes to ensure high qual, a high quality of indoor air, high indoor air quality and occupant health. We hope that you agree that the proposed project helps to address the city's housing goals and climate action plan and balances the RM59 zoning allowances with the character of the existing neighborhood, and ultimately will contribute to both the beauty and the function of the city. We look forward to addressing any of your questions or comments.
How does this support ADA? Can you show me something that, I mean, have someone in a wheelchair or shoulder or something like that actually make it in?
Right, so, how, accessibility is what you, ADA doesn't apply, but accessibility--
I'm sorry, accessibility.
Correct. Townhomes by nature are challenging for accessibility compared to a multifamily building or an apartment building that would have an elevator and then a flat layout.
Right.
And so, by that, it inherently doesn't. In terms of the dimensional standards within the kitchen and the bathrooms and all those, they comply with all of the code standards for maneuvering and accessibility.
Can you go over the roof deck aspect of the development itself?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
What can I, what can I show you or share with you?
Go through the whole roof deck layout.
Sure.
So, so, you know, we, I think this is our, probably our first application for a roof deck, so--
Okay. We are, if you, let me go back to the third-floor plan. This is a good image. It shows it from the third floor, using the existing staircase, just continuing it up one more flight. There is a landing and then a carve-out in the gable roof, so it's cut away out of the gable roof. And let me jump back, and you can see here on the front house, the carve-out. So it's not an additive to the gable roof form, but it's subtracted out of it. It's a 10-by-10 square foot area, set back from the eve line and with a solid rail. Initially, it had been bigger. It had been all the way out at the edge of the roof, and we changed that so standing up there, there are no views into the next neighbor's property. Just--
The backyard? I mean, obviously, I could see from your site views that you can't, like, see into windows, but like, can't you see into the backyard?
No, we, let me show you the section that we did. Wrong way. And this is also located, if you just, if you take a six-foot-high person, which is what I've drawn here, and a 45-degree angle, standing at the edge of the, of the solid rail, and that's at the edge, your vantage point comes right up to maybe the opposite side of their property line. So technically, yeah, there is a view into that property, but it's highly obscured, and it's at the back edge of the property or the side edge of the property.
Pardon me.
But if you were in the back unit--
That, that would be regardless of which unit, just by default of the angle. And that, so, you know, you're standing back, there's a solid guardrail that comes up.
I'm sorry, I mean, I'm not, it's just like, I am not super visual. It's like, I'm, but I'm just looking at your drawing, and it looks like if you're at the second unit or the third unit, if not the first unit--
You're looking--
--you're looking right in their backyard, aren't you? I mean, I, I don't, I don't understand how you could not be--
I was horrible at geometry, but yeah, I'm coming to the same conclusion.
Is my diagram not trying, not helping explain?
Not really. I mean, I don't, I didn't, this isn't a personal criticism, it's just like, I'm not getting how you would, I mean, and I'm not saying that that's a, a dispositive factor, but from a privacy standpoint.
So you had other, other viewpoints. Can you go back to some of the viewpoints that you had?
Which, which drawing?
We're flipping around, so--
Got it, this one?
That was a different one.
Higher up, so we can see the yard.
Oh, gotcha, yeah, let me do that, and that's all the way at the beginning. Right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm trying to--
So you're looking at the roof?
I, I can't zoom in.
So maybe the very last condo, and I see what you mean by it being obstructed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry.
We should also note, though, because it's important to note, there are existing trees that we're not touching, and you can see one in the, the right side of our neighbor's yard. There's new trees that we're planting. The roof deck has been pulled back from the edge of the building. It's got a solid guardrail. If you stand up at the very, very edge of it, you're still looking down at your own roof, which is beginning, or because of your height, obscures views into a lot of the neighbor's property. The view you're gonna have is going to be on the opposite side of their property. I wish I could explain it in a more graphical way. I don't have a rendering from up there. I'd always be happy to generate it, but we look at privacy as a two-way street. We don't want to provide somebody with a house where their privacy is impacted, especially for their outdoor space, nor where we're doing the same thing to a neighbor's property. And so we've taken that seriously.
May I ask another question about the third story? Is there any additional storage up there, or is that entire thing just a walk-up to that roof deck?
You mean the gable roof?
Correct.
Yeah, there would be some non-habitable attic space--
Okay.
--that, that could be used for storage, it could be used for mechanical systems.
Yeah, and if you see where I'm going, I'm trying, because people around here tend not to use their garages for their cars, they tend to use it for their, what's the scientific word, crap? If there's additional storage already built into the third--
There is, and there's--
--floor, that might help. Do you, can you give me a square footage?
I, I don't, I don't have a square footage of that. I mean, it's a square footage of the size of the floor below.
Okay.
We can also require, I would think, that they--
Already, as soon as already city code that you're, we've been through this before, right? Where definitely the city code says you're not supposed to put your crap in your garage, you're supposed to put your car--
You're still supposed to be able to drive your car with your crap in your garage. Yes, that's the code, from what I understand.
And if someone actually complains to the city that you have to--
Correct.
--remove your stuff and--
That'll make for a very exciting hometown days, when we all start telling about each other.
We also do, we also do have storage throughout in the, in the ground floor, some of which is code-required.
Okay.
And, and the garages are 20-by-20 feet. I have a 20-by-20 feet garage in my house, and I have a lot of stuff stored in my garage as well, because I drive a, I drive a VW Golf.
And this might not be the appropriate time for this question, and it's directed more for the city or for anybody on the commission that can remember, but I feel like for the townhomes, for the project, we approved near, closer to your place, David, near the Tongan Church, didn't we require?
Mm-hmm.
Or didn't, or, or, or the developer required that they had to park in their garage as a part of either the PD plan?
Yeah, even though it was covered under the--
Right, and so, can that be something that's included in here, that they have to park in their garage? And in that plan, they had additional driveway space, too. I actually thought we were being too mean.
Yeah, they had additional guest space.
Whereas this one has a driveway space, and it seems like a reasonable expectation to require that they park in their garage. Do you guys know what development I'm speaking of?
Front and right is on the corner of Devonshire and--
Yeah.
Club.
Club.
Right, mm-hmm.
I don't know the details of that one.
Gateway, I think it's, kind of the development.
Lisa Costa-Sanders might know the details of that. Do you want to speak to that project, or, yeah, if we could?
At least on the spot.
Again, sorry if I'm messing up the order, just occurring to me. Storage is on my mind.
2811 San Carlos Avenue, it's 11 new single-family homes, is the one you're referring to.
Right.
And so they did have a requirement that the garage spaces, the 10-by-20, be kept free and clear for parking, and that was a condition that was added, and it was also required to be included in the CCNRs.
Is that something we can include for a project like this, or is there something special that differentiates the two?
Wasn't anything unique about that development.
Okay, thank you, Lisa.
I, I've prepared a lot of CCNRs on projects in the past with my land use attorney, and lots of things can go into CCNRs, as was just mentioned, including something like that. By design, I, I've also designed a lot of projects where it had a garage adjacent to living space, where there's a tendency to want to use that for habitable space. On one project, a drumming studio. For, for this kind of project, it's not adjacent to a private yard, it's not really connected to the interior of the house directly, you go up a flight of stairs. By design, it's really designed for cars, but if there's a, a desire for us to put something into the CCNRs, we can consider that. I would have to run that through Dragonfly.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted that, I have no problem adding that to the conditions. That doesn't, it's fine with me.
And it just seems like this is a more appropriate project to do it versus the one on Club Drive that Lisa mentioned, only because they had driveways, so--
I would agree.
Those are my only questions for now. I know we haven't heard public comment yet, so I may have more questions after. Thank you.
I have one other thing, though, which was you mentioned the words, considering stormwater recovery. You didn't say you were doing stormwater recovery, but, but, what, what did you mean?
I, I don't recall saying that. What we are doing is, in the civil drawings that you have and in the landscape drawings, doing a lot of onsite water retention--
Yeah, stormwater might have been the wrong word, but--
Right, so for stormwater harvesting, for collecting rainwater, yes, we are going to do that. I haven't identified the system for doing it, but there are, there's a really nice one called a Rain Hog, and it's just a really slender box that sits on the side. It can sit inside the garage, there's a variety of ways to do it, but it takes up very little dimension and holds quite a bit of water.
Okay.
But for the purposes of all this site's irrigation.
Okay, thank you.
So, does anyone have any additional questions for the applicant at this time?
Is your traffic engineer tonight?
Is he here? No.
Yeah, so nobody from W-Trans is here?
No.
Okay.
So, I'm still trying, and staff can do it, I'm still trying to figure out where this is 50 feet.
Not responding.
Laura, get a sheet 3.0 out.
Let me try to use the mouse here. Oh, okay. So if we see at the front, this dimension, as mentioned, as dimension from the sidewalk, up here to the top of that front townhouse from the street side, that's 38 feet, 2 inches, that's the building height. The 50 feet is if you pull this line all the way back to five feet away from the building, which is where the municipal code requires us to measure from, all the way down to the average grade down here. So from the back, what the view is gonna be from the neighbor to the rear is still that same height. The height of the townhouses doesn't change, but we're required by the code to measure five feet out from the building, and then straight up in that plane, then all the way to the highest point of the building. So that's where it's 50 feet.
Okay, can you just leave this up and give me a moment to think? Okay, thanks. So, now it's the opportunity for folks who'd like to provide public comment, to provide public comment. So far, I only have one speaker slip, and there are a lot of people here, but we'll start with the one I have. Robert Estrada.
Remind me, Robert Estrada, and I flip the side. And I really like what I see that you've done with the lot size that we've got. My whole concern is, on a much larger scale, that this isn't really community development, it's lot development, and there's plenty of samples up and down the peninsula of where this has gotten to be 40 years old and looks like hell. It lacks the consistency, and this is not something that they can control. It's just something that I think needs to be considered in how projects like this are approached. I don't, I don't think you guys can do anything about it. There's, there needs to be some way for the two people who are in between this lot and the one that is for future development to sell their houses and keep their tax base, because if I had to sell my house right now, I couldn't afford my taxes, much less a new house. And this is, this is just something I think that needs to be considered. I'd love to know where I can go higher than this to start to get input into that outside of running for public office, because I don't want to do that. I just wanted to let you know, but I think they've done a very good job of trying to mitigate within the constraints that they've got. I just think that the constraints are too tight.
Are you, are you referring to the step down from the higher building to the lower building?
I'm talking about the fact that basically, when you look at it, even it shows in the pictures, you've got low houses--
Yeah.
--and then you've got this tall thing. That's survivable, but then the house, the property next to them, eventually someone will buy it, and they'll build another tall, narrow building, and it just, it, it's not an integrated plan for a community. It's, it's a development on a lot-by-lot basis, and, and that produces very chaotic neighborhoods, and that's just my concern with it. I, I don't think they could do anything better than what they're doing with the property. And as a mild capitalist socialist, I believe in getting your names worse. Anyway, I just thought I'd like to say, that's my concern that I keep seeing with what's going on. I mean, you can even see it in Wheeler Plaza. How come they didn't take the entire block and redevelop it? Because you could have really done something really major with that, where they have redeveloped the ones on San Carlos Avenue, or rather, on Laurel Street. All of the restaurants there want sidewalk-- All of the restaurants there want sidewalk stuff. It's beautiful. I love sitting out there with my dog. But when they rebuilt Sneakers, they didn't move the front of the back four feet to give themselves a really substantial front. They just kept it, it might be a little bigger than it was, but it's still not adequate. And you wind up with stuff like Town wanting to take parking spaces. And in this Town, even if they're adding them at Wheeler Plaza, that's, you know, we're, we're not as bad as Palo Alto, but it's pretty bad. Anyway, thank you.
I don't want to lessen your comments in any way, but I think that if I'm remembering correctly, with the Sneakers design, there's actually going to be sort of an indoor-outdoor.
Yeah, it's indoor-outdoor, but it's still, when you move the front back a little bit, you really open it up. And it just, the street's fairly narrow. I'm coming from the viewpoint of loving to go to Spain and go to some of the, I would like to see them take the whole blocks and just rip it out and put a huge Plaza Mayor there with total underground parking.
Yeah, that's not going to happen.
I've seen those, actually, those, the communities that they build there, and they're pretty amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, it's, it's just not, it's not an integrated development plan, and that's not their problem.
So that was the only speaker slip I have, but there are a lot of people out there. Is there anyone else who wishes to provide public comment? This is your opportunity to do so. Not seeing any.
I move we close public comment.
A public hearing?
Sorry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silberman?
Yes. So discussion among the commission.
I would really like to see the requirement for parking, or for keeping the garage clear for parking in the driveway. As a CCNR, I think it makes sense and would alleviate many of the concerns I read.
I'm going to support that.
My client has no objection to that either.
Great.
So who can speak to the traffic? This is a traffic analysis, not really a study.
Parking.
Parking analysis, yeah, parking. Can you speak to it, or, because I've got a few questions on that?
Let's try this. You ask the questions and maybe we can, myself and Laura.
Okay. So one of the questions that I had, well, two things. One, you guys did, this is actually not related to that, but you guys did a public outreach for two developments.
Correct.
So should we assume that the next development that you're going to be proposing is going to be fine on the parking requirement? Or is that going to be amended? I mean, you have a traffic study, or a parking analysis based off of potentially the approved use right now, with maybe two exceptions for the conditional use? Is that going to be amended when you, I'm assuming you're going to use W-Trans again for the analysis with that other project?
Yeah, if this, if this project's approved, the other project would take into consideration an approved project.
Okay. There was lots of mentions on spaces that were available, but none of them were ever, we don't have a map of where they, where they actually found those spaces. And there is, there is a word that they usually use, immediate vicinity. What does that mean? I mean, is there a definition for that? Maybe staff has a definition of what immediate vicinity means? I mean, is there a-
Like several hundred feet more than that.
Yeah. I mean, because they're using, basically, from what I could tell, San Carlos Avenue, Prospect, Magnolia, and Cedar. That's a pretty large area. Were these spaces more on Cedar? Were they on San Carlos Avenue?
I can't tell you. I do know when it comes to transportation engineering, there are standards for how they measure everything. I just can't tell what that's going to be. I don't know, Laura, do you know what kind of standards we use for that?
Well, I want to make sure that this is reflected in the record. So Mike, if you can make an effort to come to the microphone so that we can get everything recorded. I was just looking at the report. It's on packet page 56, I think, is the most detailed description of where they surveyed. So I understood it to me that they surveyed Prospect and Cedar between Magnolia and San Carlos Avenue, and on San Carlos Avenue between Prospect and Cedar. So that's the middle of the paragraph that starts Part 1.C.
So yeah, and then it goes on to say there were at least two available spaces during peak evenings in the immediate vicinity of the project site. What is that? I mean, what is the immediate vicinity?
I took that to mean the survey area.
Okay, so, so the whole area is the immediate vicinity is what, is their definition?
The whole survey area.
That's how I took it. I did not ask that specific follow-up question of the traffic engineer.
I mean, I see your concern. It's tight. It's, but.
No, it's just, you know, when you're asking for a conditional use permit on an exception of two parking spaces, you think that you would probably go that step beyond to explain the parking analysis a little bit better. And that's, that's really my point. You know, the, the map that was provided did mark the proximity to transit. It had a map there. It could have probably been identified a little bit more as to where these spaces were available. I mean, it's, adds more spots, or adds some more notations on the map.
They might even have that. I just, if it wasn't in the report, I could certainly ask what, where those spaces were located.
Problem is, we're here, we're in a hearing right now, asking for a conditional use permit. You see my point, so.
I don't have any more questions for right now.
I have just some comments. I do want to say that I noticed and appreciated the, the adjustments in design. I do think, despite its height, that it fits in better with the neighborhood and looks, looks more like a neighborhood frontage, and I appreciate that. I also really liked the materials used and the colors used. And I absolutely love the sustainability features. And I just want you to know that doesn't go unnoticed, so.
Yeah, from the design standpoint, I mean, I'm very happy with the design.
Yeah, I echo that as well.
So does 18.29 of the zoning ordinance, the design review findings, do we need to make, because I didn't see those in the report. Do those apply to this project? Do we have to make those findings? I mean, I'm specifically, you know, looking at 829.060D, that the project has been designed to be compatible with neighboring development by avoiding big differences in building scale and character between developments on adjoining lots in the same zoning district and providing a harmonious transition in scale and character between different districts. Do we have to make that finding?
You do have to make the design review criteria findings that apply to this particular project, so yes.
Okay. I mean, like, just to be frank, I was prepared to vote no today. I mean, I was keeping an open mind. I have kept an open mind. I think this is a beautifully designed building. I mean, absolutely gorgeous. And if you wanted to put it on Laurel Street, I would have zero reservations whatsoever. But now, I'm struggling a little bit because I was expecting a whole bunch of community members to be here and complaining about it, and nobody's here. And I feel a little weird voting no when no one seems to be opposed to it. I don't think, it's gorge, I mean, it's, it is a beautifully designed building. Features are wonderful. It's, it's fantastic. It's not, it's also, it's also not quite as massive as I thought it was, based on the, on the report, which is why I was focusing on the height. It's not as massive as I thought. I mean, I was envisioning something that was in places twice as tall, three times as tall as the neighboring houses, and it's, it's not. But man, it is just, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to get too philosophical here, but I'm harkening back to one of the first projects that we, I think, as, we as a group ever worked on since we're about to be gone, you know, where it was on Laurel, and it was the first one. It was the first, it was the first one that was going to be 50 feet tall, although we ended up reducing it. It was the first one. And we had this discussion about, well, you know, the other ones are going to get built up too, and so it's okay. You know, we kind of got comfortable with the fact that we were doing it. And I think it turned out all right. But I just don't see these other houses, you know, being developed soon. And it goes to Mr. Estrada's point. You know, I think we're going to have one massive house, and then for some significant amount, it's going to look weird. So that, that's what I'm struggling with.
These examples exist when I drive all around San Carlos. And whether or not those look weird is certainly a personal opinion.
Unfortunately, I'm one of five.
Some I think look weird, some I think do not look weird. I was walking by 1536 Cherry Street, now that it's finally finished tonight. I don't think it looks weird. Right next door is a brick, 12-foot-high bungalow.
There's a massive building on the other side.
On the other side is a massive building. On our street is a massive apartment building across the street. There's other apartment buildings nearby.
I'd like to say yes. I mean, I just drove it.
No, no, I understand that.
I mean, that, that apartment building is, it does not feel, I know it's only like three houses away. It doesn't feel like it's part of that little mini-community.
Certainly, I understand that. I, I think the fact that there is not a line of people speaks to the outreach that we did, the changes that we made, the website that's been informative. We had a lot of people with the same mailer come to our community meeting, and everybody got put on our notification list that then got included on the website. The other difference, though, is that when I presented Laurel Street to the commission a few months back, we initially went to those neighbors with a 50-foot-high building on Laurel Street, code compliant, and learned both from the city and from the neighbors that everybody wanted to see the height reduced by one story and by nothing greater than 40 feet. Some claiming that it was a mistake of zoning, should never have been done, and so on and so forth. Lesson learned approaching this project, we didn't do that. We didn't come close to that. We didn't come close to designing a box. We designed a gable roof and kept a lower height. And so I think that's why you're not hearing or seeing concerns about that type of thing or about its height.
Or maybe they, maybe I'm mistaken, and they're all going to develop their prop, sell and develop their properties, in which case-
They haven't, they haven't called me yet.
Yeah.
See, but I don't, I was struggling with the height a little too, mostly because the very top of it seemed only like roof deck, and there's part of me that goes, gosh, it's just stairs to a roof deck. Is that wasted, you know, height? Can something be done? And the reason I'm ultimately leaning the other way is that the area doesn't have any outdoor space, and I like the gable design. So I have to admit, I feel you, and I'm, I was there. I'm just, I'm, you know, me always talking about 49, 51. It just pushes me over the edge, knowing that, A, they get some outdoor space, which I think is needed when you live in a climate like this, and B, the, the other issue is that both, both the houses next door are one-story, but of course, they could always build a two-story per.
Oh, I'm sure they'll at least build a two-story, if not, if not develop it into something like this.
But I feel you. It does look, it does-
It's, I mean, it, it's so beautiful, even its beauty is out of character, I mean, compared to the, no, no offense, Mr. Estrada.
No, no, no. The houses next to it are flat roofs.
Yeah.
And it's kind of like that.
Right.
Yeah. We, we actually did talk with staff and with Al about a flat roof on this project, which would bring it down to that gutter height. And there was a strong preference to keep it as a gable roof, that even though the building's taller, it does something to minimize the appearance of volume and provide an aesthetic that's more residential in character. And we talked about that. We talked about eliminating the gable on the back house, on other, on other things. They're providing something, and this is, this is the direction that was favored by staff.
I see some reaction in, in the public here. Now we, so we closed public, the public hearing part. We can reopen it if, if there's a-
Yeah.
So if, if there's people, I see, I see a hand now, and I see some nodding.
It's fine. Someone want to make a motion to reopen the public hearing?
I move to reopen the public hearing.
Is there a second? Can I have a roll call, please?
Second.
I think we already got one, sorry.
Sorry, I beat you to it.
Yeah.
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silberman?
Yes. So if you'd like to speak, if you don't mind coming up to the microphone, it would be lovely if you introduced yourself, although you don't have to. And if you could fill out a speaker slip later, that'd be fantastic too, but you don't have to.
Yeah, hi, I'm James Leighton. I'm at 543 Prospect Street, which is right next door. It's on the left side there, the north side. And when I first saw these plans, I really thought it was like a cruise ship had docked into the neighborhood. And I, I, I think the design is, is nice, but I just, I agree that it's really out of character for the neighborhood. And I, the setback, I know, is, is, accommodates our neighbors on the other side, but it's really close to my house. It's only five feet away. And, and there's large windows, and they go all the way up. And so I, I, I struggle with the size of it. It's just huge. And again, it just feels like a cruise ship has docked right into the neighborhood.
So why were you resistant to saying that?
You know, I, I really felt like this, this has been a slow-motion project. I mean, it was a year ago that we had the neighborhood meeting, and, and I really felt like it was a done deal when I came to this meeting and, and, but, yeah, I just felt like it was a done deal. But again, the height is just, it's, it's huge.
How long have you lived at 543?
Six years, yeah. And we enjoy our backyard tremendously. And, but it looks, it's just gonna, it's gonna block the morning sun that we have. And I know that they're using that palm tree as a reference, and that's, that palm tree is way the heck up there. And to imagine that house being, right, it's just going to be a solid wall. So, and I know I had submitted comments about the, you know, the visibility into our backyard, and at least we don't have balconies on our side, so.
But you have the wall.
We have the wall, yeah, with windows, large windows, looking out, so, yeah.
Is there someone else who wanted to speak?
Thank you.
Yep. Positive and negative. I'm not just looking for negative. If people want to say positive things, that's great, too.
Sure, yeah. My name's Andrew Eaton. I don't know anyone in the room, other than, I think Al probably knows my dad, but my dad forwarded me this.
Eaton's son?
I'm Don Eaton's son.
Don Eaton's son, wow.
So I grew up in San Carlos. I don't know, is that good or bad? I don't know.
It's pretty good, I think.
He's usually here to talk on behalf of you.
He forwarded it to me.
In general, I think it would be pretty, I mean, it's good, it's good and almost, I'm just wondering for you.
I don't know anyone else in the room, so no one's, no one's buying me a drink. I don't live in the neighborhood. But my first home was on the East Side, and so it was affected by the Transit Village. And so the height was a big deal when East Side people were organizing. So I'm cognizant of that, but I, I think it's very well done. And I, I, there was a property, I'm up on the Alameda, but there was a property behind us that was always two lots, and I came to the design review board on that, not because it affected me, but I was just more curious than anything. And I was kind of blown away, because they're like four-bedroom homes, they had two-car garages. I think you could fit four cars in the garage, in the driveway, in addition to the two in the garage. And all the neighbors came and said, oh, but they're going to park on the street. And I'm like, so it's like-
Which one of us are responsible for that?
If you're here first, if you're here first, my crap's more important than your crap or something? I don't know. So it's like, I don't know. I just don't think it holds any water if, but there's nowhere else for them to park. I mean, I guess everyone's fighting for the street parking, but no, I think it's very well done. It's beautiful. And I think it, I don't know, part of me is, I, I used to work in commercial real estate, and, I mean, that's the zoning, right? It's downtown. It's on the outskirts of downtown, but it's downtown. So to me, it's kind of like, it will eventually all kind of get developed out. There's apartments on the corner. On the other side of the street, there's the big complex. I can't remember. Then there's a home, and then there's like a five-plex, I don't know. But I'm sure that's all gonna, I don't know how long it's gonna take, but it's kind of gonna happen, right? So I think it was well done. I don't know. Those are my comments. Seems reasonable to me.
That seemed like a mixed pro and a mixed against when it comes to the park. You're kind of in the middle on that one, but okay. But Don usually comes and he's, he loves all the developments.
No, no, he wanted, wait, hold on. Yeah, he is, he is, because he's a real estate guy. But he wanted the transit village to be higher, and since I had an east-side home, he didn't care. He's like, no, I said it should be lower, and we still fight over that.
The dinner must have been interesting.
It's interesting, so.
Your dad was right. There was someone in the back. Did you want to?
My name is Igor Finkel, so we're 529 Sycamore. I think you showed a rendering from, from our window. My wife was one of the people that had concerns initially with how it would affect the views. I'll say that the houses, or the development is absolutely beautiful. I had personally some similar concerns to, to you, where I think while the design is beautiful, it's, and it's very modern or contemporary, it's, it's, it's amazing. The reason I didn't speak, speak up was because, right, I mean, you drive around, you see developments everywhere, and I think in my head, I've resigned that whether I like it or not, high den, you know, high-density housing is going to be built, and so I can, you know, some of my concerns with, with the renderings that were done were at least partially, you know, addressed. You know, parking, I think, is definitely a concern. You know, on, on the Sycamore side, there's no parking, right? So we use, whenever we, we have people, we use the Prospect Street for parking, and then our property is one of the properties that goes kind of both, to both streets. So it's not uncommon for us to park along Prospect. That is a concern. I think that's been voiced by, by several council people here today. But overall, that's why I didn't speak up, is because I just figured there's no avoiding this. It's happening, not just in San Carlos, it's happening everywhere, right? You're driving along Al Camino, and you're seeing developments left and right, or even you need to go on Al Camino, you could drive along San Carlos within the city limits, and there's developments left and right. There's house, there's single-family houses being...
Well, you can, you can have an $8 million piece of real estate, or you can have a $2 million piece of real estate, who, you know, it's not surprising that folks are developing these things.
Exactly, right. But with that said, I think the property at least takes some of the character, you know, point of, of the neighborhood, but it is, the fact that it's so much bigger than everything around us, but it doesn't help that the two houses on either side are, you know, kind of flat, single-story houses. So it, it, it makes, it accentuates the, the fact that it's so big, that much more, but...
Yeah, it just makes it more, yeah. It just, it's ironically, it's so out of proportion, that makes me think that whoever owns those properties plans on developing them, because, yeah.
Can I add one more comment?
Sure, although there's...
Okay.
All right.
It's just really quick. One of the things that happens with that apartment complex, I'm sorry. Apartment complexes, it's on the downward curve of the hill as it comes down to San Carlos Avenue. And so even though it's tall, its roof line comes back in almost tangent to the, to the curve of the hill and the houses above it. So it doesn't, it doesn't, it has an advantage that this doesn't have. This one is on the rise going up.
That's a good point.
My name's Mariana. I'm the director of the Board of the HOA for the 1700, where the other building there. Our concern that we had when we met regarding this was parking. And you did address that by having two spots per unit, because as of right now, if you ever look at Prospect, you can never find parking after 6 o'clock. And so we know that...
A parking study we got is not accurate?
No. I could tell you, when I moved in, I bought my condo, six years ago, there was always parking. I mean, that street was almost empty. And now, after 6:00, there, there's just no parking there. So if it's possible, I don't know who you require to have that included in the CCNRs, but, and maybe we should look at requiring that for ourselves? Right? But that, and we also didn't comment, because he did address a lot of the issues that we had concerns with. The style, beautiful, I want to move in, but it, it doesn't quite fit in with the city, but we understand that we are a city in change. So I don't know if that's the change we want to go in, but that's where we are. So that, but I do appreciate the environmental implications, the parking considerations, and that you took all that into consideration, and aesthetics of making it four units with the roof line. Thanks.
All right.
So I'm Ryan Fell. I'm at 530 Prospect Street up there. So I actually think this is, I came in, and I was, I was expecting to really not like this, but over the last couple hours, I've read the, you know, the document.
Wait, you're 530?
Prospect Street.
Prospect.
Up and over.
All right.
From the top there. So...
You can't develop your property.
Yeah, I know, I know.
We live in there.
I'm actually looking at the Senate Bill 827, that would be my way to, 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 which I'm sure is a big discussion around here if we get that passed. But a couple of things that do come to mind is that if we develop 549, it'll prevent some company coming from buying all, all the yellow you see there, and on south of Prospect, or west of, east of Prospect, and putting one larger one. So at least, I, I'm not going to have to look at a, quite a bit of a monolith, because it's in the middle there. So from my perspective, that, that's the one. I do worry quite a bit about James's Light at 543. You know, it commented, and I know that they did a little work to, they did attenuate some of those, some of the concerns that we set in May, and that's kind of why I'm here in support. I mean, they did a good job. I mean, attenuating some of our concerns, if there's a way to get it shorter, it'd be better, but I don't know. I, I think that the, the style is right. I think this is a win for the San Carlos general plan, that they want to have the higher-density close to transit, and this is what it is. I think this helps accomplish that goal. I just wish that it's a little less impact for, for James's Light specifically. And, but it does, it does prevent the one big monolithic company in a block that might come in there. So, and that, that's why I like it personally.
Okay, that's helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right, all right. Motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silberman?
Yes.
David, this time, can I ask the developer just to respond to something from public comment?
Of course you can.
Okay. Would you mind coming up and responding to some, particularly the concern about your neighbor at 543? I'm curious, have you had any discussions with the neighbor prior? Have you adjusted the design to help alleviate some of his concerns? Was there a light study done? Am I asking too many questions at once?
No.
Yes.
I'll start with the last question first. No, you're not at all. Yes, we, we have the comments from the neighbor. I believe written not only from our outreach meeting, but comments written in on our website, all of which are in the commissioner package. 543 has, for the front half of the parcel where the house is, I believe I had counted, there's three windows. Am I, is that correct or not?
Yeah.
It's a pretty, it's a pretty private side of the house. The, the portion of the property that's not as private is the rear yard. Okay. Along, along the rear yard, yes, our living room has larger windows. Two, two windows for the back two units that do face into 543's yard. At the, at the third level where the bedrooms are, it's pulled back 10 feet, has much more modestly-sized windows. And I, I don't anticipate there being, from those windows, a privacy issue for bedroom windows in particular, just watching how bedroom windows function. There's no outdoor spaces facing in, and so it, it comes down to those, too. One of the, one of the things that we have looked at, but haven't finalized in the landscape plan, but I'm happy to, is in the landscaping strip, we have a, we have a two-to-three-foot-wide landscaping strip running along that side of our property and that, a fence. Our neighbor had asked if we could get a taller fence than what's allowed. I think we're showing six feet. We certainly can put a taller landscaping element along it. One thought would be some trees that have more verticality, but not a lot of lower crown growth, so wouldn't impact the walkway, but would allow filtered light to come in through those windows. We can always look at reducing the size of those living room windows. They're large, I, I will admit to that. And so I feel like there are certainly some things that can be done toward that, whether landscaping or a, or a window modification for the, for the rear two houses in particular.
Thank you. And then, did you do a light study to see how, how the morning light would impact? Was that something that was requested, and did you do it?
It wasn't requested. We didn't do it. No, we have a 3D model. I mean, we can. But just looking at the orientation, and, and the neighbors in particular, they know exactly how the light comes in. The light, the one thing the light study has a hard time doing, in particular on this site, is it has a challenging time understanding the topography, and there's a lot of topography here, and it doesn't take into consideration accurately existing trees, of which exist. What the neighbors know is they know what it's like today, and they can easily speculate what it's going to be like at different times of the year, at different times of the day. But the gable roof, the reduced height, and those things are things that we had done at the onset to mitigate against those concerns. Again, avoiding some of the issues that we ran into on our Laurel, Laurel Street project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did anybody else have questions for the developer? Sorry, David, I'm taking your role.
Nope.
I do have comments, but not for the developer. So, I mean, this area is zoned, this whole area is zoned with the idea that we want to have multi-tenant housing close to transit. I mean, that is what the general plan, that's what, you know, that's what we're trying to do as a city. So I think with that in mind, I think we have to keep that in mind. And the other thing I think that we're not thinking about that has to be considered is, you know, the rights of the homeowners when, in the value of the property when they go to sell, and it might be in the developer's hands now, but at one point, it was in the neighbor's hands, and they had, there's a certain value that there was placed on that property. So when we start taking stories off of buildings, we're taking value off of the buildings, and I think we have to be really, really careful when we decide to do that. Now, if this had been up as high as it was when they started, I would have absolutely no problem taking a story off that building, right? But the way that this has been built to fit into the community, and even though there's like a two-story shift between the top of this building and the two houses to the other side, I think it's very tactfully done and blends into the community really well. The people to the side of this building can either build a second story if they want to, they so choose, or they can sell for a pretty penny to another developer who can build more multi-family, you know, units, which is what the zoning is, is set there for. So the other thing that I would say is, if not this, what? Because I doubt that we're, I doubt there's going to be a single-family home go in there. So, I mean, it's, I mean, if we're looking at what we really want in there, I think this is about as quality as we're going to get, considering everything that's been done. And that's just my two cents.
So that's one yes vote. Is there, is there, where are you at?
I think the developer and the architect have done an outstanding job architecturally with the plan, fitting things in. And even though it will stand out from lower density in, in the neighborhood, it is a correct zoning. It fits in overall with the plan, even though I, I agree with the first, first speaker. These things sometimes shock people, and it's unfortunate, but we have, I think the designer has done a lot to mitigate that, and I appreciate that.
So that's two. Is there at least a third yes over there?
Yes, but I would like to add, again, the CCNRs for the parking space in the garage. And I would also, as the developer offered, like to add the taller landscaping element for shielding 543 Prospect and reducing the living room size windows, or the living room window sizes.
So can we get the motion up, please, staff? So I move that the planning commission grant approval for design review, conditional use permit, tentative map, and protected tree removal permit to allow the construction of one new three-story building with four townhouses at 549 Prospect Street, APN 050-030, excuse me, 034-150, for the reasons incorporated in the staff report, with the conditions and the conditional use permit code compliance certificate and the tentative map certificate, with the additions that, that item one of the draft conditional use permit and code compliance certificate be modified to require that, that the project also be consistent with the representations made at today's hearing, as well as the presentation provided at today's hearing, including the increase in the minimum amount of landscaping to 23%, the increase in the number of trees by seven trees, the inclusion in the CCNRs for the project, that the parking spaces provided in the plan be used solely for the purposes of parking, and in addition, that the, that the landscaping on the north side of the property be designed in such a way as to provide the maximum amount of screening feasible, or alternatively, that the windows on that side of the project be modified to increase screening, either by reduction in size or by providing some form of obscuring material.
David, may I friendly amend that to say "and" instead of "or"?
Sure.
That the living room size, the living room windows are reduced in size, and that the landscaping is as much as it can feasibly be on the north side.
Sure. Yep, I will accept that. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silberman?
No.
It passes 4-1.
Can I just make a comment before everybody leaves and we move on to the next item? I'm very glad that you all came up and spoke. It clearly made a difference in adding some of, some of the conditions that we did to the approval. And just personally, from the planning commission, I never want a neighbor or a community member to feel like anything's inevitable, or that their voices can't be heard, or that it's not going to make a difference. So please, thank you very much for your comments. It really did make a difference, and thank you for coming.
Also, also, just, if we're going to be here in 575, if we can have the traffic engineer here for the next presentation, and a little more detail on the parking analysis, now that we have a, thank you.
All right. So moving on to the next public hearing, consideration of a resolution recommending the city council adopt the ordinance amending San Carlos Municipal Code Section 2.24.155 and Section 18.26.040 relating to the Residential Design Review Committee.
I was secretly hoping everybody was here for that.
I was going to say, I think there's going to be a lot of public comment on this one. Can we just go to the motion?
No.
Sorry, okay.
The meeting purpose is to receive public comments, make a recommendation on the ordinance. The RDRC was created in 2007. It replaced the Exception Design Control Committee when updates were made to the residential design review regulations. As you're aware, the RDRC reviews additions, as well as new single-family residences. The RDRC currently consists of one planning commissioner, that's appointed by the commission, two city council members, that include a design professional and one resident. We have had recent issues trying to fill the vacancy on the committee, and also, there's been some committee member absences that have caused us to cancel several meetings. What's, before you tonight, the recommendation is to amend two sections of the municipal code, ones in the zoning and one, Section 2.24, that describe the composition of the RDRC committee, and replace that by city council resolution. As you're aware, a city council resolution can more easily be updated to change, you know, according to the design standards of the community at... know, according to the design standards of the community at the time and the review level. So, what we're recommending from that composition that would be established by city council resolution is that there would continue to be a planning commissioner appointed by the planning commission. We'd also add the opportunity to have an alternate member if that planning commissioner wasn't able to attend the meeting. And then have an architect or a licensed design professional that's under contract with the city to serve on the RDRC. So concurrent with this, we'll be going out with an RFP, request for proposal, to have a team of licensed professionals that would be available on an on-call basis to serve on the RDRC. And then finally would be the community development director, or his and her designee would serve as that third member. The ordinance is exempt from CEQA. And here's the motion, should you choose to make it, be a recommendation to city council. I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
What's the definition of the community coordinator-director? Is that someone like Bonnie?
The economic, the community development director is Al Savay. So, it would be a staff member, a planning staff member.
So, that would eliminate any community member?
The planning commissioner would serve in that role as the community member representative, correct.
Bonnie, do you have any comment on this?
I believe she does.
I have always thought that there should be an architect on the planning commission and on the RDRC. And I don't agree with the statement by one of the council members that says, "Oh, we don't need architects." And so, I urge you.
Was that an architect?
No, that was a city councilman.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
For the planning commission.
Never lie.
Because I think, I think this idea of always having community members that don't have any background in building, or design, or any practical knowledge is rather short-sighted. And I'm sorry if I am not being very nice to community members that don't have some background in the volunteer things that they do, but I think sometimes you find that they have an interest. And I speak as, I'm not an architect. I studied it, but I liked, the building's going up, I liked the construction phase better. And so, you know, I'm coming with sort of a half-and-half attitude, but I think it's very important to have somebody that knows something about the thing that you're volunteering for, and that's all I have to say.
Is anyone else who wants to provide public comment on this issue?
I probably should recuse myself from this, but I agree with what Bonnie says. I studied architecture too, but didn't practice, and went into planning thinking it's more challenging, perhaps.
If there's no other public comment, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Angela beat you, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Epstein.
Chair Silverman?
Yes.
So, now we're on the discussion phase?
Yeah.
I'm having a little bit of trouble. I mean, as I read this, this would essentially dissolve Bonnie from the committee.
Well, I'm off any party I do.
Yeah, I hear you, Bonnie. We're going to have a party for all of us that are off in June, but, at my place.
June's a big month. Is the party going to be for us, or the fact that we're leaving?
Probably, probably the latter.
Probably the latter for everybody else.
The point is having a community member being a part of it, whether that person's the architect or not. I think there should be an architect on the board, but I really think that there should be a community member involved in it. I mean, if they can't find one, fine, but I think there should always be a recruitment for a community member for the RDRC.
Well, the point is, is the planning commissioner is the community member. I mean, that's the argument that's being made. I have my own concern, and it's a cynical one, that I probably won't state, but I'm going to anyway. But first, let's just note that we, there are two things here on the table. One is taking this out of the ordinance code and giving the city council the ability to do this by resolution. No problem with that. We should definitely do that. I think that solves 90% of the problem, because then the city council can do whatever they want, I assume. Here's my concern. So, part of, I think, the value that's added by the Residential Design Review Committee is it gives citizens an opportunity to come in and feel like they're being heard, where they have a chance to, you know, have changes made. I think this, I'm not suggesting for a second that Al's designee is not going to be super fair, or that this architect isn't going to be independent, but I'm just thinking from a citizen's standpoint, you come in and you're looking at three people, and one of them is the city, and the city's recommending the project, because it's not going to come to the RDRC probably unless Al's team is recommending it. So, the idea that you're going to significantly sway that person, probably gone. And then you've got an architect who's getting paid by the city, who's in contract with the city. So, I think that whether it's considered fair or not, I think that the citizens who come before it are going to, are going to feel like it's unfair. And, you know, the appeals from the RDRC, so, one of, again, very cynically, one of the benefits of the RDRC is that if folks feel like they're being heard, they're not going to want to appeal to the city council, or the planning commission, and it ends there, because they've been heard. The appeal to the planning commission and/or the city council is really expensive. So, I don't know, I just wish there was some other composition, you know, that wouldn't create the impression to cynical community members that they're not getting a fair shake.
May I ask a question of the chair?
Al, I've missed you. That's a hard yes.
Okay. So, may I ask, so it's, is your concern primarily with the city staff member, or is it the whole composition? Because I heard some agreement about the architect, and then there would be the commissioner, which could be the volunteer person or not, but we think someone from the commission should do it. So, is it primarily with the staff person?
It's optics, and I could say you could eliminate the contract person, or you could eliminate the staff member. You could replace the architect with a volunteer architect, which I know is impossible to find. If that's impossible and has to be a paid architect, then someone other than someone appointed by you, Al, just from, so from an optics standpoint, you know, people would feel like it's not a done deal when they come. And I don't think that's fair. I mean, I know that you'd keep an open mind, that Laura would keep an open mind, that you folks would be fair, the architect would be fair. Just because they're paid by the city doesn't mean they're going to, you know, do what the city wants, that they're going to act independently. But I think that, you know, my belief in government and its integrity might not be universally shared. So, that's my concern.
It certainly would feel like the deck is being stacked, even if it's not. And I know how hard you guys have, you've had a really hard time filling the vacant position. But yeah, I'm in the same vein as David here. It just, it feels stacked, even though I know that's not the intention.
We, I mean, I would be amenable to switching that position out with another design person. One of the things that we had initially wanted to do, and I think is effective in other places, is to have two architects. But it was somewhat of a cost issue. But to have two, two is better than one. And the issue is also a quorum. You only have three, and you, you know, you'd have to go to five. You couldn't have four, because if you have, you know. So, we wanted to keep it at three. So, there, you know, lies the difficulty. But we would be amenable if it was not a staff person, that's fine too. We were just trying to fill that position with somebody with qualifications and knowledge of design and codes and things like that. So, but we have had difficulty finding people from the community, and boy, have we tried. We have really tried. And so, one option might be another paid design professional.
Yeah, I mean, we could just do, we could leave it open. I mean, again, this is just a recommendation to the city council, where, you know, one's a paid architect, one's a planning commission member, and one is a person either paid or volunteer with some design experience, whether it's design of buildings or landscapes. Because I thought Joaquin, you know, added a really nice perspective. You know, a lot of the time we're talking about landscaping at the design, at the RDRC as much as we're talking about structure design.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I actually think you'd benefit by having a landscape professional as much as anything else. Again, probably not easy to find people to do it for free, but, you know, maybe for a small stipend.
Well, I guess that would beg the question, like, what would be a qualified person? I'm just thinking about the committee that's set up to look at the single housing zoning ordinance. It just seems like there could be volunteers, now that they're up to speed, that could slide right into the RDRC position, and probably some planning commission positions. And I'm not, I'm not trying to overstate, I'm not trying to overstate it, because I understand how hard it is to ramp up, believe me, in the knowledge of codes and what we can and can't do, and what we can and can't approve just because people dislike something. But, man, I would still like a community member in there that has some background and experience, but maybe not, maybe it doesn't have to be a licensed architect, maybe somebody that served several months on this, you know, on this committee would, that would be appropriate experience.
Well, they would probably be more up to speed.
I mean, we could solve this problem right now. We just recommend a lifetime appointment for Bonnie for that third position.
That would be good, too.
And then we've got the third one, and she can't say no. I mean, so then we're saying.
Recommend that they choose.
I mean, she's a subordinate Bonnie, the RDRC.
She's the only consistent thing on the RDRC.
So, if we say, if we say it's got to be Bonnie, and it's in the resolution, then it's done.
I would get somebody that doesn't go to turn 87.
In some ways, this seems academic. This motion is completely silent as to the resolution recommendation anyway. So, I mean, we can make this motion. I don't know whether there's a se-
More of just providing input, I think.
Is there a, oh, is that right? I thought there was like a recommendation on a resolution. I thought that was in the packet, but I don't see that in the motion. I'm not asking for it. We can just make this motion and be done.
But I just want to drill down just a little bit, because I think the direction that you're going is a good one in terms of your suggestion, if the rest of the commission, of course, supports that. But the idea would be that you would have that person filled by either a community member with, but it should be, I think, someone with design experience, and it doesn't, it could be a landscape experience, but somebody with a design background.
Not necessarily a license, but experience.
It doesn't have to be licensed, a designer, somebody with design experience, and/or a licensed architect hired by the city. Because if that person doesn't show up, or if something happens, or they go out on leave or whatever, then we would need to fill that position. And if we could have several design professionals on contract that could plug themselves in when that person was not available. So, that's why I like the flexibility of that, if that's what you would be open to.
Yeah, I mean, I sense that there's some consensus.
Yeah, I would agree.
I mean, I would just, you know, even broaden it a little bit more. I mean, someone with a planning, because you-
That's fine.
You know, the staff member was going to be a planning staff member. So, you know, someone who is, you know, either has a planning or design background, whether it be a volunteer, community member, or someone who is under contract.
Could we make it give him preference to the community member, even though-
I think that's the preference of everybody.
Yeah, and I think that that would be our preference, that it be a community member if possible, both because it saves the city money and because it, you know, increases the community engagement. So, I think that that, is there a consensus on that?
Yes, absolutely.
So, there's consensus on that. That's our recommendation. And I move that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance to amend San Carlos Municipal Code Section 2.24.155 and Section 18.24.040, removing reference to the Residential Design Review Committee composition. Is there a second? There's a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Harper-Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Epstein.
Chair Silverman?
Yes. With that completed, moving on, I don't believe there's a presentation. I think that's a typo. Is there any report on recent city council actions? No. Are there any planning commission comments or reports?
Yes, I will be unavailable for the next scheduled planning commission meeting. I will be in Japan.
Denied.
Oh, nice.
Japan?
You don't know my life, David, okay?
You live a very exciting life.
I got lots going on internationally.
It does, it's, yeah, you do. I'm both, you know, jealous and kind of glad it's not me. Correspondence, other than what has already been discussed? And any planning staff comments, reports, and updates, or updates of current projects?
Just briefly, we do anticipate bringing forward to you amendments to the single-family zoning district. We anticipate a study session and then a public hearing in May-June time period, and we'll be in communication with you as those dates solidify, since those are important upcoming meetings.
All righty. Thank you. If there's nothing further, the meeting is adjourned.